Morning. Call the daughter, we have a forum, take a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Alright, all in favor, I. Hi, both. Carry, morning, Rich Brown.
Morning. A lot of discuss the. That's the moisture guys back on the roads, gravel roads kind of blading things up, hopefully get things shaped up so you got. Back it, yeah.
I was driving on yesterday and that's a slide.
Oh, really?
County lines.
Can't believe all the rain we got, it's not surprising, but there's some moisture underneath yet, so we start rolling stuff around now.
Yeah.
Get stuff blading and then we still got the crews out on one oh five getting the rock. Basically, we're focused right now. I guess on schedule for what we know from before, so. Still going at it that way.
Plan to start date for one oh five is what.
They haven't given me any other than late July.
Do you have an official bid or numbers or what or?
Oh, I can get you that, yeah, I can get you that, the bit for the, yeah. That's all I really have this morning.
What's the timeline on that road, like two weeks they figure?
Five, yeah, it's a little bit longer, I think it might take, depending on weather and whatever, it might be a. See, we got eight miles. It could be a good two weeks, maybe a little bit longer.
Will be the harvest then.
Well, let's hope so, you know, if they start, if they start in July.
They get the whole month of August.
Yeah, if they do that, yeah, if they do that, they should, it depends on their schedule, but yeah, they should be able to.
And then, have you heard anything on that bridge on three ninety?
No, not yet, but still.
Got some guys that are nervous because if it gets fall and that's a.
Well.
Go around the ethanol plant.
That's what, yeah, that's what, you know, he had said he wanted to do it late fall and try to get some winter work out of it, but if he doesn't get enough work, so I don't have anything new from him yet. Let us know, but.
Yeah.
As it turns out, I'd be okay if he started in the spring too, or late spring.
Right.
But we'll see what their schedules like.
Yeah, I just, those farmers over that way that have run into or asking about it and they're really kind of leery, that's main road they use to get over down to town, so.
Yeah.
But.
But I don't have any new information on this project.
Alrighty.
Or three hundred fifty.
Anything else, Rich, yeah?
Up the corner of one oh five there with sewage treatment plant is, is it just a private driveway or is it part of a road we have or anything?
Technically, it's private drive.
Somebody requested ditch cleaning in there once in, road ditch cleaning.
Yeah, and that's, you know, because you've got the access, I don't know how that driveway, I know we, we ended up, when we got all said and done, we only have that fifty foot right of way through there, the rest of it's either. County owned with the sewage treatment. And partially private with the rest of it, I don't know how that easement set up there with that driveway.
Okay.
But you're talking the one that goes off to the west, right?
Yeah.
Toward the, yeah.
That's what's on the rack, you just mentioned, it was all flagged off to clean and then when you said that they weren't gonna clean it and I'm just curious what happened, so. I said, I don't know, it was ours or, you know.
So I guess I don't know what part needs cleaning.
I don't either, you just said that, even which side it was or whatever.
I know there's a little covert in there.
Box there, isn't there?
Little concrete box, it could be a covert if it was needed to be taken out, but it doesn't take enough traffic, it's not super wide here. For what it serves, it's fine, but I don't know what the issue is, I've never, so I don't know, it's, it's, it's county owned, it's private.
Okay.
I think, I think there's, I don't know how the easement works there, I guess, the whole thing is because there's still access to the back. To that cabin up there, so I don't know where, I'd have to, we'd have to look back at when that whole property was transferred. But it's not, it's not secondary road right of way in there unless it's fifty feet.
Yeah.
Which follows the curve.
Yeah, it now follows the curve.
Well, I'm not sure what he requested, like I said.
How long ago was that?
Probably at least a year ago, I'm guessing.
I'll see what we've got in our documents, if there's something there.
And then he mentioned that when it was raining there this past week, it started, water was running in the wrong direction because all the manholes were. Still had the big bags of straw around them and there's a bunch of junk around them, so he went in there and pulled them out, so the water was going down the storm, so there's not. Down and then across his field like it was supposed to be, so. The new development out there, you know, there's a bunch of little straw, yeah, whatever you call those, they were actually right around the manholes, I think, too.
Like it's all throughout the cell.
Yeah, but I guess he said the rebar and stuff was all covered up the trash. Thing, but once they removed the bags and the water was going there, not across the field like it was.
All the actual grates or whatever.
Yeah, I forgot to look when I drove by there this morning, but, you know, they stick up above the ground.
Yeah.
Far and then they must have a rebar down underneath.
Was he talking the ones in the, in the ditch? Cause that.
I'm not sure where the water was running across.
Some of that comes, actually goes north, hits that pipe and then turns around and heads back south.
Yeah.
Like from casino building, maybe even further, actually comes back to the north.
I think it was all going straight south, cause you said the water was going across this bean field, it's corn on the corner, so it must be the next field down. And once you got the bags out of there and it was going down the storm, so it was supposed to, so.
Okay.
It was working, but.
Jason, see, I don't know what the time, timeline is on.
You have to have established grass there, so I don't know what I.
I think it's pretty well established, my seat when I drive by there, so.
Like, I'll ask Jason, just if there's a timeline on that, cause that's all DNR mandated with your stormwater protection plan, so. We don't wanna push water on people, but.
No.
Well, I wouldn't think that unless, it shouldn't, I mean, it's supposed to be filtering stuff through, depending on how fast you get the rain, but it said that the grates were pretty plugged too, or.
Sound like just a, you know, anytime you get stuff around the bars and stuff, it slows that water down.
They're supposed to be, supposed to be, also, there's, I, I don't know if it's still in their contract or not, but a lot of times there's. Used to call it silk fence cleaning.
Right.
Well, now that they've got the straw waddles, I don't know if that's still nice, but it should, but.
I know there was some straw and stuff, that was trash that came in and collected over those grates, that's corn stalks or anything else, you know.
Well, we haven't had a lot of rain since that stuff was put down to tie down the straw or everything else, so it all floated when it got wet.
Wind blowing.
Maybe he said by just taking the bags out of her, that solved the problem, so they are out, at least the ones that were around the grates anyway, the, the ones in the ditch, the longer ones, they're still there. Yeah.
And I can, I'll run there afterwards, I'll call Jason, just see. If that's the case, if they, if we gotta leave them in there for a while, then maybe those guys can come up, clean them, clean that stuff out and then make sure it's standard, so that it's. Yeah, cause I know they had to redo some stuff when we met with the DNR out there on that, they had come back and they do some stuff, but it was. Had moved or shifted or whatever.
Look at that.
They're pretty fuzzy on that stuff.
Yeah, especially, I don't know, they usually, and stuff we've done in the past, they don't always check it, but you never wanna get caught having it not right. Having something up, they can, they'll come in and tell you how to change it to make it better, but if you didn't have anything up, then there's bigger, bigger problems.
Exactly.
So, so, at least they get an established grass root system.
Cap, Neil Strich? Thank you, sir. Uh, drainage, any claims, no brains? So Jacob Hagan called, I think he talked to all of us, we're asking for extension on this project over here east of town. Sounds like they just have a little bit of ditch cleaning to do, or maybe the ditch cleaning might be done now, spoil piles and that, a little bit of pipe work to do. And I, I did, I told him I didn't have a problem with it as long as it wasn't, we're gonna get some change orders or anything, if you just need a little more time, that is what it is. As long as it still follows the guidelines of the project, I, I don't have a problem with it, so.
I don't have a problem, we just need to make a motion.
That's my non-crop plan, so.
Yeah, that's what I said, I don't, no, that's what I said, if there's crop damage, absolutely not, cause we don't wanna extend it, so then he's, then we're doing crop damage after that, but he said it was all.
I'll make a motion to extend the.
Yep. There's motion to extend the, uh, project on the thirteen to June thirtieth, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Here in none, all favor, I.
Alright.
I, opposed, that motion will carry. Uh, claims, you guys look over them, any questions or concerns? Motion to approve the, uh, claims. Second. Any discussion on it? Here in none, all favor, I. Both? Payroll claims, motion to approve payroll claims.
I'm the motion to approve payroll claims?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any discussion on it? All favor, I. Uh, payroll eligibility salary changes? Payroll change for Terry Dorsey and sheriff's office, longevity, want you to approve the salary change for Terry Dorsey. Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All favor, I. I, opposed. Liquor license, cigarette license? Uh, board appointments, sort of regional housing alternate. Should we get an application?
We did.
Tommy Toft Butler, gonna be our alternate? Take the motion to, uh, approve Tommy as the alternate to work our region housing authority.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Here now, they're right.
I.
Close. Carry, thank you, Tony. Uh, many law enforcement agreement discussion, Dan.
Uh, basically, AJ and I have been working on this since January with the, the city of Manly. The payments come down, they're short funds, they don't think they could come up with the forty-five or would we have forty-five thousand? Um, so they asked about doing another year for twenty-five thousand. Um, we did put a couple of stipulations in there, one is we take weekday calls only, we'll cover during the weekdays. We don't do the weekends unless they, it's an emergency and a twenty eighty agreement like anybody else, we go down and back them up on emergency calls. Um, the other thing in there, we did get in set in stone that this will be the last year of an extension and a contract. Um, that we, they gotta figure it out next year, this, within this next year to either they're all in or all out and then get their third officer there, because my guys are just getting beat up too much on the rural side. And we're taking that away from the rural to put into Manly and I think we need to get back and especially if this takes off by the casino and we get more and more traffic and stuff out there. So that's kind of the big thing on this, I did talk to Tom Meyer, we did make one change, a couple of changes late last week. Um, I sent this out to you guys for your review, so the payment would be twenty-five thousand per year or that. Two thousand eighty-three thirty-three per a month, um, we don't have to do the paperwork on it anymore, so it's gonna take a little time away from Margie. That she won't have to do the two to three extra hours and fill out those forms like we've been doing. Um, they did ask if we would look at it to see if we would sign it, next week I put it only on for discussion today, so no action term. Um, I told them that's something I talked to you, but normally what we do is wait for the contracts to come in, but that would be up to you guys on what you wanna do, so that's kind of the overview of it, it's. Been a long back and forth pain, basically, to get to where we're at.
Right, I mean, I, it's fine by me, let's, let's let them sign it. Um, we're not gonna, if they, we, we're kind of in agreeance on it with Dad, if that's the recommendation, I would let them sign it, cause. Bring it back to us and then we can sign it, nothing's gonna change and we just, I don't know what they're worried about, but. That's kind of the way it goes, I mean, most other stuff we like to see them sign it first, but.
Any questions on it, I know we've talked a little bit on it.
Yeah, just send it back to them, cause they should be meeting.
The seventh.
They meet the seventh at night, we can have it on the fourteenth, then we get to go, so it's signed before the end of the month, June, so then it'll take effect July first, right? Sounds good to me, thank you, thank you, Aaron. Uh, safety solutions, approved proposal for safety services for Worth County. I see, I know that, we had a discussion a little bit last week.
Doesn't really have anywhere to sign or anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Um, but. Safety committee's all in favor of it, county secondary roads in favor, we gotta, gotta get something going. We're confident a reasonable rate, so I'll take a motion to approve the proposal for safety solutions. There's motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion on it?
We can probably, we'll do that, but we can also probably look at. You know, not spend the money on my cog.
Yeah, instead of going down there and.
I don't remember what we paid, that money can apply to.
Does he know how that works?
What's that?
Does he know the hell that works so he can advise you?
But he's, while he was here, he said he wasn't always happy with the way to put the program.
Right. Nope.
That money you can shift to another location.
Sounds good. Alright, all favor, I.
Alright.
Bye, opposed? Motion will carry. Jim Ho, Rich? If he does have a, if he does have an agreement or a contract, you need to sign, then you can sign. Uh, courthouse water damage discussion, impossible action. A little more up there, huh?
Yeah.
Does Brian him come look at it?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
He got my message, but he's probably.
He swamped, then he probably is.
Yeah, would you wanna look at this building? Yeah, so I, I don't know what, I just, how long is it gonna be till that wall just comes apart? So I, I don't know what, it, it might end up being a safety thing eventually.
Yeah.
Especially if court starts going on and stuff like that. So I guess until we hear from him, words of wisdom.
Uh, get him here and see.
And you guys look at it.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it, but yeah, I'd get him here and get his thoughts, cause he's, you know, plaster, you know, interior walls and stuff like that, so I mean, it's. Like I said, when I looked at it, like Chelsea and I looked at it one day, she showed me, stuck my finger in that paneling and.
Well, she tried, she tried to catch you on that too. And she jumped, so.
So. Yeah, I guess let's, let's get Brian's opinion, get him to look at it and see if there, if. What, if there's a temporary fix and what it would be.
Cause even if, I don't know if you put something over it so that it doesn't fall on somebody or what, I don't know.
Something to anchor. Patch over it.
Yeah.
But if you took that paneling off, I would be as great of what you saw.
That can of orange you might not wanna open.
And, and you'd have to evacuate Truce's office probably.
Yeah. Yeah.
And start finding new homes for people.
I'm on vacation.
So it just, it's not getting any better.
Right.
And we're open for tours.
Yes, yeah, right, yeah. Okay, well, yeah, get Brian here when he can and, and. Get his recommendation and we'll just leave this on the agenda, if, I mean, we have to fix, we have to fix, you know, we have to make sure it doesn't crumble on somebody, so.
Well, as far out as construction is, no matter how we do this, we might have to do something here before.
Well, and if we could do it temporarily, you know, if we could do it.
Yeah, sure doesn't fall.
Temporary, something even if, even if it's an eyesore, that it's temporary but safe, you deal with it until we can get it fixed properly. Yeah, cause everybody's busy with construction.
Cause maybe you don't let them use the stairs and make them use the elevator, I don't know.
Right.
If it's bad enough, it could come to this point, you know, it could either go in or out, they could condemn it.
Yeah, right.
You know, so.
Yep.
That's the problem, it's a fire access too.
Well, they got the escape up there too.
Yeah, there is that too, isn't there?
Yeah, you can get into that.
Well, there's stuff, two points, that's the biggest thing.
Yeah.
Windows?
Yeah. That tree has really grown over into that first gear. Chris judging it up there last week and he was like.
Should be turned back on.
Better get somebody on top of that.
Alright. Yeah. Yeah, that's, uh.
Let me get my saw.
Yeah. Let's do that, let's just see, get Brian here this week and get his opinion on it and. Go from there. I'll call him too. Stir him up. Alright, uh, what was that, Melissa?
Um, there has been an inquiry about a lot out at the casino, so I stopped, talked to Jeff about the process of how, um, the next steps are, so we got that squared away. Um, there's that shop Iowa in Northwood at the Bean and Bistro tomorrow, seven thirty to eight thirty, so any small businesses that are interested are welcome. Um, the events calendar should be in the local newspapers in the next couple of weeks. And I'm still working on the brochure, Kaylee kind of, um, scaled back her hours this month, just because she's taken an intensive class. So when she gets back next month, it'll be great. Um, and then I do have two, two more shifts in, on Saturday of Country Thunder from three to six. If anybody wants to sit and hand out water for free, you get a free day pass, so please contact me.
Sounds good. Um, do I still need to write you a check?
Oh, yeah, I'll send you an invoice.
Again, please, I'll, I'll drop.
Hey, up, AJ.
I'll put the mail for you, so. So, alright, any questions for Melissa?
No, just looking, I'm, I'll be meeting with that individual, I talked to you about Friday, this person's got some development area out there, I'm not sure what he, where, where he's leaning to, but I'll talk to him Friday and I just need to get. A list of all the lot prices, I, what I did with that.
Yeah.
Forgot one.
It's on our website.
Website?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should be part of our.
And let me know if you wanna, if you want me to go with you to that meeting, Mark.
Yeah, I'll see what time he gets in on Friday, he's gonna call me Thursday when it gets a little closer to coming down for the weekend and then he can talk to me, so. But yeah, if I get a time, I'll let you know, that'd be great.
Perfect.
Anything else for Melissa? Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Yep.
Uh, people service, water, waste water, I've got an email, as long as weather permits, they're gonna do water tower inspections this week, uh, tomorrow, start tomorrow. Do the blue water tower first and then, uh, off the drain, uh, the casino water tower down to a certain level so they can inspect what they need to see in there. As long as there's no storms or lightning or anything like that, it's a big thing, so that's their plan for this week out there, I know. Get that done. Uh, Department Head discussion. Over nineteen stuff is all pretty well been lifted by the governor, hasn't it?
Alright, I understand.
So.
Might take that off.
Yeah, I think so, it was, when we did our emergency proclamation, do we need to?
Reverse it.
Reverse that, or?
I think it just expired.
Expired, but, okay, I think we had to do it when she put it into effect, Governor Wright, and then we did it to.
And she pretty much vetoed everybody anyway.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's the thing, so that's what I kinda wanted, it was just, did it to kinda coincide with those guys so that. So, we were able to. Follow those guidelines and then that's also how you get funding if they ever happen, so. Okay, yeah.
Mentioned too, the courts are all opened up, I mean, I still saw the sign on the back door.
Yeah, I think they're still.
If you have, um.
If you have your shots, it's two weeks past your shots, whether you have the two series or the one series.
Checking on that, I have no idea.
Yeah, you got a, you got a microchip in. Part of the shot, didn't kiss.
Yeah, anything else, Department Head, why is, I know we've got our F H V, so we can chat about courthouse stuff.
From SZA was here Tuesday, we went with Jackie and the sheriff and myself, took him on a tour. Um, I think we answered most of his questions, he'll have a report for us here in the future, so. Uh, very nice individual now. Yeah, whatever. And it was.
I don't think anything surprised him.
No, no, and it wasn't election specific at all, it was just primarily just courthouse and jailhouse physical security, so. Um, other than that, I am looking at Starlink, uh, possibly as our secondary internet service. Currently, right now, we have one of their telephone is our primary, uh, we're paying MediaCom, I think probably hundred fifty to two hundred dollars a month, cause our secondary backup. Um, but both of those are terrestrial, you know, fiber cut or something, you know, would take those offline. Uh, so Starlink is an option, I know some guys are looking at it for like ninety-nine dollars, it's not fast, but you know, if we lose.
It's a second backup though, so hopefully we wouldn't ever.
The other, the other backup I have, I do have a cellular gateway that I can put in place on a first net chip. Um, like I said, not real speedy, but just in case, so, um, I'm still looking at the Starlink thing, just to see, it's like five hundred dollars to get a setup of ninety-nine dollars a month, so.
Starlink, the last dial-up connection there is or?
Not fast.
Actually, it's a satellite. You can see them over at night when they fly. See them, there's, it's a, quite a show. Elon Musk, uh, it's like fifteen hundred satellites in orbit, lower earth orbit right now. Um, results so far, it's still in beta, but its results so far have been pretty favorable, so. Uh, it's another, I know when I was on the governor's broadband subcommittee, it was one of the things we looked at and. Um, it's, it's, it gets you that last mile for rural folks, not saying the courthouse is last mile, but, uh, I think you'll see some adoption of that pretty soon out here.
Rural areas.
Rural areas that are not served, I mean, we, we are really well served by, oh yeah, you're, you're a perfect question. Yeah.
Are you done with MediaCom contract then, or will you have to pay to get out of that?
No, we've been expiring, you know, the contract for a while, so I, I haven't pulled the trigger on it yet, I just, I wanna do a little bit more research, but just. I'll probably drop the new town and then roll to, to start off.
Tells you what direction to look and how long and what time.
There's been a lot of UFO sightings based on the start.
Yeah. Saturday night, I seen pictures of lights going through, so a lot of people are commenting on it, so yeah. Gotta pay to keep those lights on.
Um, on the evaluation that we were on with Chris, the one thing, don't be surprised, you're gonna see a lot of deficiencies.
That's a given.
Yeah, I mean, especially in the security part of it, because like, one thing we talked about is, just cause you have a force here, like the sheriff's office or that, they're not security, they are law enforcement officers. It should have its own security in the windows and, and cameras, so. It was, it was good to go through it with them, um, I think there's a lot of good food for thought there, but there again, you know, it's kind of small county. One of the people he brought up was, well, you check everybody that comes in and the lady told him, hell, I know everybody in this county, so I mean, you know. So you're gonna see a lot of things on there, but it, it was good to do it, um, but you're gonna see a lot of deficiencies.
These are all things we can cooperate as we go forward with.
New facility.
Like, like no, um, windows at this level and stuff like that.
Or if they are, they're alarmed and then crash stuff in front of doors, I mean, there's, it was pretty, a lot of stuff went over in probably an hour, hour and a half.
Hour and a half or so, I think, yeah, it said, uh, you know, we talked about here, we're possibly gonna be putting some new facilities up, and he said let him know, he'd be more than happy to work on this.
And he goes, can I take a picture of that?
Yeah, I mean, there are, there's like a film you can put over some of these windows to help with, uh, the, with blast or something like that.
But with.
Like a windshield.
With.
Turns it into like a windshield, so it won't come in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But with hoping will be somewhere else, how much money do you dump into this?
That, that's just it, so I mean, you know, it, he, he started the conversation, these will just be recommendations, it's not like SZA is telling us we have to do these things.
Well, I think they're, they're probably like DNR is, you know, if you at least show them what you're trying to do and you're making an attempt, it takes time, it takes money, they know you can't afford to just throw everything in. Um, I think they're probably the alone, they're just saying, hey, if you got a plan for the next three to five years, you'll probably let you slide, they'll keep giving you those deficiencies, recommendations whenever they come, but. If you're that much closer to, to doing something, I think you'll be okay.
They just don't find any money for you.
Right, yeah.
No, that report's gonna be big, I got a feeling, just on everything we've covered, like a lot of it, we were, yeah, we don't have that, you know.
Yes.
The only other thing I have is Justin Brun started yesterday, starting dispatch, Jordan Helgason will start tomorrow, I'd like to have Jordan up and going here within the next week, cause he's already certified and already knows Northwood, so.
He's, he's gonna be city though, right?
He'll be city, yep. Uh, Justin will be doing dispatch for thirty days and then he'll switch over to jail for a couple of weeks, so hopefully in a month and a half, we'll have him up and. Going on his own, so Margie is gone, Terry Dorsey's filling in as office manager, so some of our paperwork might be a little bit slower and there might be some different numbers on it, so.
Always your full staff.
Chelsea will take care of him.
Yeah, otherwise you're full staff now that.
Well, except for Margie being gone, yeah.
But as far as jailers, dispatchers, deputies.
July will be able to be full staff for a month and then.
July will be able to be full staff for a month, and then we lose Justin to the academy, so.
Is he actually physically going down there?
Oh, no, they're going down.
Oh, sounds good, there, the other department heads, anything?
So, I kept, so I sent you Jack, is that, no?
Okay, Supervisor Weekly, Venus.
All I had was the fifteen minute question and answer, dealing with only. That, that was it for the week.
And I go on Monday night, um, just to make the kind of, run over their interview and their audit a little bit, and just a few minor stuff, shortest meeting we ever had, so that was. Um, and then I had that fifteen minute interview, that's what I had last week, so. Our discussion, I guess, we're gonna call.
That's all I had to, was just that zoning discussion, I mean. I don't know where they ended up after that, I did, I just did my fifteen minutes and went back to work, so. Guess we'll see what their recommendation is or what they consider from there.
Was in the what? Oh, I did read that, yes.
You guys, I don't know if you saw, but uh, that EMS bill that passed. He said it finally, so once we get the final details on that, hopefully really soon, we can uh, start working on that discussion and see where we need to go. With EMS, or what the best thing is.
So it does need to be on the ballot, or it doesn't?
No, it does not now, and there's no sunset, before there was a five year, now it's ten. Um, because that's where, basically, if it was, you'd put it on the ballot, if it approved, then in five years, you'd put it on the ballot again as the yes or no. Made public measures, what do they call it, yes or no, and then you have to fire it, now it's at least every ten. Um, but otherwise, not a lot's changed from what it was, um, it just does not have to go on the ballot now. Still the taxation, I think it's still the same, on how you get two different options, local option or add borum. Add borum tax, property tax or whatever, so we just gotta start looking into what, what the best way to go is, do we have local option? For the county right now, but if they know some, community cities do, or is that all joined together?
Can do their own.
Yeah, yeah.
So right now, the locals' option, that's a hotel motel.
That's the rural, that's fund fourteen, if you would say the funds.
Uh, yeah, hotel motel is just, well, just those hotels, right?
Yeah, cuz that already is split up.
Yeah, that's our. But, so yeah, we'll have to look into that, a little more, and then uh. The, uh, this was probably last week, believe before, the mental health taxation. So that bill come through, so that's gonna start rotating, property taxes out. And uh, the state's gonna fund it, which ought to be interesting next couple of years, so.
Well, and that's gonna affect the July one budget already.
Yeah, cuz they're gonna start January first, I think.
Yeah, they're gonna drop our levy to the twenty-one fourteen or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. See, I gotta, well, and I'll find out more tomorrow, because right now, everybody's. The state's got a max levy, but everybody is different.
Right.
Each, there's some places that are burning up that entire max, that are just getting by, you know, we're. The western counties are twelve or fifteen, you know, we're twenty-five, we were gonna start coming down. And meet in that middle for a bit, fifteen to twenty range, and uh, now it's gonna affect all that, change everything a little bit, but. And unfortunately, it doesn't help our general, because that tax just goes directly to that, you know, so it's not like we would, we're taking it, we gotta take it off property taxes, but. It doesn't help our general budget, it's not like that money comes back into us now, it's just.
It was always in a separate.
I'll get more info on that tomorrow, I gotta, no, I'll leave it tomorrow, so. Otherwise, there any on the agenda or any meetings we'll be at?
Oh, I did have one more thing, um, registration's open now for Naco Annual Conference, it's in Prince George, Maryland this year. It got switched uh, in July, so if anybody's interested, I've gone a couple of times. It is eye opening, you do learn a lot, you, you know, you see vendors and people that you typically don't see in Iowa, so it's uh. If you haven't been, it is worth a trip.
Let's see if I can't buy something out of Maryland, make a reason to have a trip to go again. Yeah. Well, nothing else, uh, we'll take, got everything on the agenda, right? Quite one this week, got a motion to adjourn. There's a second?
I'll second it.
All favor I? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.